It's just the clock, I'll take girl call now.
Start Dan.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Here.
Mr. Dominic?
Here.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Here.
Mrs. Dublock?
Here.
Mr. Helm?
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Here.
Okay, recognition matters to the audience, we have none. Moving over to good news reports.
Um, I'd like to apologize, we are gonna do the Tiger Talent before the good news report, so as to retain some oohs and ahs and surprise, that seems to be the kind of thing we do.
You do you Carl.
Well, we have a lot of special visitors. So with that, we would like to talk about our this month's Tiger Talent Award winner, as we've talked about in the past, the Tiger Talent, these are the best that we have to offer from our district is our employees, and the people who we would really like to say when somebody new is coming in, a family, a potential employee, these are the people that we want you to talk to because you'll again be forever sold on the Sherard District. So, with that, I will quit talking and turn it over to Kayla to show off the work that current president does.
She came to me and said, "Oh, I have to go present to the board." I'm like, "Oh, why do you have to do this?" You know, she's like, "Oh, they want me to talk about Roar, they want..." And the second they said that, I said, "Oh, okay!" Which just made me laugh because I was like, "Perfect person and perfect reason to get her to the board meeting."
I am very excited and honored to announce this month's Tiger Talent. It is our very own Julie Burns from Winola Elementary School. Her forte in the classroom is definitely writing, she's one of the best writing teachers that we have. Um, it's amazing, the quality of things that come out of the little first graders, they're so proud to show off their work.
I've worked with Julie the entire time I've been here, this is my 13th year. Julie deserves this award because she is one of the best. I am impressed, especially with her writing instruction. She sends out the best writers ever. You can tell by the time they get to fourth grade, or would you specifically, I teach writing, who had her in first grade. Um, right now, they're already writing paragraphs. I mean, she doesn't, she doesn't mess around.
She's been an esteemed member of our staff for years and years and years. She's been here for as long as I can remember. I know she started in Sherard School District back in the 90's actually. She left for a brief period of time and came back in 2004 and has been with us ever since. Um, she's been at Winola Elementary most of the time, she lived at Sherard Elementary for one of those years.
She does wonderful experiments with the kids. She has that, one of my favorites is when she does the lima bean, and where she has them dissect a lima bean. She's, you know, straightforward, she doesn't really always baby them, but yet she's not real hard on them. She just talks to them as if they were little adults.
She's a kind heart, she, she does the best for her kids, she keeps an eye out for them, she teaches them to be proper humans, it's just, she, she really works, looks at the whole kiddo.
Always above and beyond, we kinda look at our little kindergartners even and say, "Oh, that's gonna be a Julie Burns kid," because we just know, um, she has a magic way with her students. She has such high expectations, I guess, for both herself and her students, so she's always so polished and that kinda comes off in her classroom and with her students.
She really makes sure that the kiddos understand the best way to approach things, how to walk down the hallway, how to sit at their chairs nicely, how to speak to others nicely. She does all of those things that you don't always think about in first grade, because you think about, you know, the basics of the curriculum, but she does a lot more than that.
I've learned a lot from Julie, so she's the one that has kinda taught me about the Roar program, how to get it set up, how to get the volunteers, um, and she's kinda guided me in the Roar, like, how do we set up partners?
Roar program is, um, it's a volunteer-run reading strengthening activity for the first grade students to meet one-on-one with a volunteer. Roar means reach out and read, and that's what our volunteers do. It was going when I came here, and I've been here for 27 years.
Working alongside Julie, she's become a mentor towards me, um, learning a lot, like I said, with her writing, how, how does she teach writing, how does it go, because she does an excellent job with that.
Because you're not ready for your conclusion sentence, actually, you have your three big ideas yet.
Finding out some of the ideas she has with science, we don't always have the same ideas, so it's nice to bounce ideas off of her, um, but yeah, a great mentor to have in the school.
Yeah, she is just one of the most well-dressed people I know in both my personal life and my life here at school. She always is just dressed, dressed to a T, you can always count on her to be super polished, and her kids, of course, love that. Little girls always want the teacher in the high heels, and it's fun to listen to them talk about her on a day-to-day basis, she really stands out.
She's the best dressed teacher in the building. I don't know if you've seen her, but if you haven't, you know that if you hear the click-click-clicks, here comes Julie in her heels.
The dress I know kinda comes from back in her days of being Miss Vermont.
Well, I don't know if you know her background, but, um, she...
I'm Julie G, Miss Vermont, a graduate of the University of Vermont.
She was Miss Vermont in 1988, so she does everything prim and proper. She is, she is a fancy teacher.
Here's Julie and her Miss Vermont.
Julie and I are the epitome of opposites of chance. She's taught me how to butter my bread properly, she's, you know, she's taught me some things that I didn't know, um, she's just, she's very prim and proper, and I'm a little bit more crass sometimes, I'll be very honest. She's taught me to be a better human in terms of the fact of how to speak to people, how to speak to children, um, and just how to carry myself more elegantly.
We've really got to know her on a personal level over the years too. This is her last year here at Winola Elementary, so she'll be retiring at the end of the year. She'll be greatly missed, um, she just has a heart of gold, she really looks out for her students, she really looks out for her fellow staff members, um, and you can count on her both in school and out of school, she's just a wonderful human being. She was always worried about what, uh, what kind of job she's doing. Every meeting I leave with her, she always says, "Hey, tell me if I'm not doing things right," and she is always spot-on, so there is never anything to tell her that she is not doing right, but it's, it's kinda cute that she still worries about that, even in her last year of teaching, she's, she's just amazing, all the way to the end.
Classic, organized, resourceful, I guess, you know, she knows how to use out-of-the-box items for her classrooms, you know, whatever it thinks that you need to have, you know, all this store-bought stuff, and she, I love how she has her roll of junk where she uses it for manipulators, playtime, and so she's able to think out of the box too.
She's caring, she doesn't want us to always know how caring she is, but it really shines through in her interactions with other people and her students, of course.
Um, she deserves it, but I think she doesn't think she does, and she does. Sincere, caring, and hilarious. She is so much fun, she really is.
She started this thing where during Christmas time, she has the kids' parents wrap their cold lunches in presents, it's like they're opening a gift from their parents. Just by putting it in that present, it just becomes an excitement that the kids love. And she, she started that, and I'm hoping to continue that. She is just very reliable, I don't, she never misses a day, she never misses a deadline, she never misses a beat, she is just top-notch in both her professionalism, being kind, and also just reliability.
She's going to hate this, she's gonna hate being magnified by everyone, she doesn't want to be a great teacher, she is, so someone needs to tell her.
My jammies, I'm waiting. Uh, I trip when I have my, I can't walk in flats, I have sneakers, of course, but I'm always stumbling.
Hey Kayla, how's this showing off in the camera, is it okay?
Oh, it's beautiful, I love it.
Thank you, it's kinda festive, you know, I didn't know if it looked too much like I went to party like it was my birthday.
And a big round of applause. I love going to Winola because obviously I attended school there, and great memories, but I always make it a point to make sure that I stop by Miss Burns's room, because it's fun to watch the kids, it's fun to watch her interactions with the kids, and it's always, from an administrative perspective, top-notch. The kids are always doing something constructive, if it's quiet, if it's loud, if it's somewhere in the middle, um, and she's consistently, you know, they reference the click-click, uh, she's consistently moving amongst the kids, so, I mean, that's one of the classrooms when I walk into, I can't look at a teacher desk, I walk in and I have to have my head on a swivel to spot her because she's never standing still. But that is just the energy level that she's there, you know, with the kids, right in the thick of it, and when she talks, the hang on her words, you know, and again, those are just the things that in 18 months I've been able to watch. So, a lot of times you'll hear somebody saying in a situation like this, "Well, I don't know how we're gonna replace her," and let me tell ya, I don't know how we're gonna replace her, there's gonna be some tremendous high-heeled shoes to fill for that room, uh, and having said that, we would like to, on behalf of the Board of Education, present your golden apple bell that you can covet in front of your colleagues and ring if you wish to summon them. So, alright, so with that, thank you for everything that you do for our district. Very proud of you. Thank you, Ms. Burns, for everything.
Thank you.
And you can seek retribution, revenge against your...
Game on! I'm saying about feedbacks.
That's right.
Thank you.
So, well, thank you very much. Uh, and also this week from, hosted by Winola, is our good news report for December. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Kayla.
'Twas the night before Christmas break, when all through the school, not a student was stirring or breaking a rule.
The good news was, gathered with the Winola students with care, and hoped that the community would love that they share.
The elementary music programs were a great success, both was totally in this pageant and accolades for their awesomeness.
In Winola and Matherville, both held family nights worth of votes, they gave away prizes, played bingo, and brought their families close.
Choosing some of the great students, there was such a clatter, our radio, our radio deputy, deputy Mendez invited them for a holiday shopping and chat.
Away to the moment, it seemed like a flash, the Rockford County Sheriff's Department brought to the shopping mash.
Matherville also thanks Brian Crap for making the scoreboards glow, it helped feature this, their students bring the songs about sweaters and snow.
Both second grade groups went on field trips to learn about Native Americans, Illinois's, Illinois animals and plants, like a fern.
When what up to our wondering eyes should appear?
Let some awesome high school students of the month, and that brought us some cheer.
So, motor vehicle and so much hard work on their part, we knew in a moment that they must be so smart.
Great readers and great leaders and their teachers model the same, we want to acknowledge all of them by name.
Now, Ava Kov, Kov, Kovasik, Maddie Swanson, Colton King, Branson Benningfield, now Mara Franklin, Alex Spangler, Hunter Sidestorm, Josie Bruin.
Blake Sarans, Beth Churchill, Drew Buckwalter, Alex Seidman, Grace Hansen, Vanessa Batista, Joey, Josie Harkey, Quinn O'Donnell, and Will Ants.
Now, study away, study away, study away.
As dry leaves that before the wild snowflakes fly, the Sherard Elementary addition is reaching the sky.
Oh, up till the gym museum they flew, on January 9th, pulled that red ribbon to cut ripe, bro.
Then in a twinkling, I heard the up saying, "Our December Tiger Talent winner is with us today, we are so excited to hear who's honored in December, it sounds like it might be one of our very own Winola members."
The junior high girls were dressed in basketball sectionals best, both 7th and 8th grade were playing better than the rest. They did very well, but did not advance. Over the years, they will surely make their fans continue to happy dance.
The cheerleaders shows off their game, day routine, it led to a second place finish, which made a great scene.
With a rah 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 and a go team go, all of their hard work deserves the praise that flow.
All of the districts, all the districts, Matt Teston had the students showing their stuff, boys were, were up all around, not even a little rough.
The teachers are working hard to help all the students learn well, and working their December magic to help their classroom gel.
It was chubby and plump, all right, jolly old elf, and I laughed when I saw her in spite of myself, a wink of her eye and a twist of her head soon gave me to know I had nothing to dread. He spoke not a word, but I stood there in silence. I think the Winola students nailed it, had it down to a science. A pull of the suspenders, and we knew we had nailed it, maybe not the same energy, but enough creativity to bail it.
(Singing) Happy Christmas to all, and to all a good night.
Oh boy.
You know, not quite as much as the same as you did last month.
For the record, Ms. Roberts has two strikes tonight, like, strikes as in boom, dropped both Mr. Lyon and Mr. Basal, I would like to... Thank you, she got both of them.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, was there any questions in the consent agenda? If you're none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So will.
Is there a second?
Sure.
A motion is made by Mrs. Lyon, seconded by Mr. Dominic to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yep.
Mrs. Dublock?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Uh, okay, thank you, welcome again this evening. Uh, first item up for bid tonight is the tax levy, this is unchanged from the previous two months, um, that's, that's why I love talking about it two months in advance, because we have the opportunity to take a look at it and answer questions, uh, prior to the adoption of the actual levy itself. If the estimates from the counties hold true, taxpayers in the Sherard District should see a seven and a half cent, not percent, but a seven and a half cent reduction, uh, if you look at the third page of the attachment, um, last year's tax rate was $4, per 100 valuation was $4.37.65. Uh, we have, this year, we are looking at $4.30 even, okay, so that would represent approximately seven and a half percent, uh, per $100 valuation. We would likely be one of the few districts in the area who are dropping the tax rate, and then you can see, uh, based on the cover sheet that was included there, we are in perhaps 1, 2, 3, 4, this will be the fifth year in a row that we are able to drop the actual tax rate, okay, so, those are, again, those are the things that, uh, those are the things that the Board can control, obviously, there's some things the Board can't control, but again, I think it's, uh, demonstrating fiscal responsibility to be able to say that you've been able to drop the tax rate that many times, and then over the course of the last 10 years, the vast majority of year-on-years have been reductions in the rate, so.
Any questions on, before we finalize the tax rate? I want to, I want to entertain a motion to approve the tax levy as presented.
So will.
Is there a second?
Second. A motion is made by Mr. Helm, seconded by Mrs. Lyon, to approve the tax levy as presented. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mrs. Dublock?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay, next item, the 10-year health-life-safety plan. Um, in the state of Illinois, every school district has to have a 10-year health-life-safety plan, which is essentially, if you want to use that particular mon, that particular pot of money, it has to relate to the plan. The plan has to be developed by the architect of record for our district, which is R.L. Johnson and Associates out of Rockford, um, just got to see some of their handiwork over across town here. Um, this again is something that occurs every 10 years by law, and it is, uh, Mr. Caver and I had a chance to talk about it and printed off a, a pretty decent agreement paper, um, essentially, the architects walk through and immediately spot all of the things that we would probably want to consider in the future in terms of the maintenance of the building, and just the, the wellbeing of the facilities, for lack of a better term. Uh, some of the things that pop right away that we're going to want to look at are some lighting and ceiling tile issues at some of the schools, and then I would say priority number one for me, district-wide, would be, in my opinion, uh, would be getting rid of the remnants of the ballasted, the rock-covered roof over at the junior high school. Uh, that covers gym 3, the junior high gym, which leaks, uh, and then there are some hallway areas that also need to be replaced. Uh, that would probably, and we'll talk about that next month, but that would probably be number one on the wish list for what I would like to see. I did ask Scott Johnson, our architect, about that, and Scott said that's probably a pretty good pick. The good news is, is the facilities, as you look through this 10-year health-life, the health-life-safety plan, all of the binders for the buildings are, I can easily pick up and go like this, and, and I gotta be honest with you, that is not common, okay, so, for example, coming from Kelowna, there was a significant number of things just for having one building, um, because of the condition of the facility. So, the Board, my predecessor, Mr. Voucher, uh, did an absolutely phenomenal job of making sure, um, that our district has the very best facilities. Um, I'll quote Mr. Voucher insane, he always wanted opposing teams or, uh, school representatives to leave Sherard feeling bad about their own stuff, and if you know how nice of a guy Alan was, you know you can laugh at that, but, um, again, um, that is a pretty significant, um, pretty significant jump, obviously, you only have to do it every 10 years. The vast majority of things that fall under health-life-safety, um, the district has always taken care of, so there's no glaring errors in any of that. Each building will get their little binder, and then we will keep a master copy of that here, um, and when the ROE does their annual inspection, that's one of the first things that they want to see.
What year do they do that?
Well, I'm sorry.
What county does Arlie do?
Um, they usually do ours in relatively early in the fall, I think they were actually here in August this year.
Same time every year, like, routine?
Yeah, we're, we're, if you have a spot on the calendar, that's usually when they hit you every year, yeah. Do I need anything glitter out at you?
No, no, like I said, roofs is a good place to start.
Avoid that trash can in the middle of the gym floor, catching water. And again, part of the problem with those, and you know this, the ballasted roofs, is you might have a hole next to the, let's just say, the, the home side basket, and it's gonna run down a joist or something underneath and drip down in center court, so not necessarily looking for the hole where it's dripping, you're literally chasing your tail looking for where that is.
Shoveling a lot of rock looking for it.
So, we had Starling Commercial Roofing out last month, uh, trying to patch a couple spots, and not gonna find it so far, it's been good, but again, that'll be the first project that I would say we probably need to look at for this summer, so, alright.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 10-year life-safety plan.
So will.
Is there a second?
A second.
A motion is made by Mr. Caver, seconded by Mr. Dominic, to approve the 10-year life-safety plan as presented. Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mr. Dominic?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Dublock?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay, uh, next item are the, uh, course changes and proposals at the high school. Um, we have an English 4 course proposal, we have an honors pre-calc moving to an AP course, um, adding robotics and introduction to guitar. Um, does anyone have any question? Mr. Warnetton provided the rationale for all of those, um, if we have any questions, I'll probably put Mr. Warnetton up because he would be able to explain it better. Though you cannot sign up for the introduction to guitar as a board member, I'm sorry. Perhaps you could visit the classroom repeatedly and learn.
Mr. Warnetton, who's gonna teach, um, both of the, or the robotics and the guitar class?
Uh, Mrs. Pudles will do the guitars, that's one of her passions, so, as a new band director, and then Mr. Fritsch will teach the robotics.
Nice, okay, thanks.
Now, does that overlap with the robotics competition? Can you still, can you still be like on the robotics team but not be in the class kind of thing?
Yes, and vice versa, you know, of course he wants the robotics kids in there, but anybody...
Can you only take one time?
Yes.
Any other questions?
If we're not referring to history, um, what other, what other social studies are there?
Oh geez, uh, we've got sociology, we've got psychology, uh, history of military, history, I might get the words wrong, history of modern sports, um, we have...
Italian periods, whatever.
Yeah, the history classes, the normal history classes, uh, that the kids take, and I'm forgetting two of them, and I'll have to get back to you on those, I'm embarrassed because we should have those memorized by now, but I don't. Speaking as a former history teacher, when you can break down, and it's all personnel-driven, and obviously, the size of high school, we have, we're limited in our personnel, but we can teach, but when you can break it down into a specialized area versus a survey course, you tend to have kids, obviously, more interested, but again, you know, personnel-driven, um, we can only offer so much, so if you can break down world history into a couple of different areas and get kids to sign up for that, chances are they're going to perform significantly better, but, coming from, that's just my history teacher, two cents.
I have to get options there.
I'll put it this way, my first job out of college was, teaching, was teaching world history, and I was told, you'll...
Now, does that overlap with the robotics competition? Can you still, can you still be like on the robotics team but not be in the class kind of thing?
Yes, and vice versa. You know, of course, he wants the robotics kids in there, but anybody.
Can you all take it one time?
Yes.
Any other questions?
If we're not referring to history, what other, what other social studies are there?
Oh geez, we've got sociology, we've got psychology, history of military, history, I might get the words wrong, history of modern sports. We have...
Italian periods, whatever.
Yeah, the history classes, the normal history classes that the kids take. And I'm forgetting two of them, and I'll have to get back to you on those. I'm embarrassed because we should have those memorized by now, but I don't. Speaking as a former history teacher, when you can break down, and it's all personnel-driven, and obviously, besides high school, we have, we're limited in our personnel, but we can teach. But when you can break it down into a specialized area versus a survey course, you tend to have kids, obviously, more interested. But again, you know, personnel-driven, we can only offer so much. So, if you can break down world history into a couple of different areas and get kids to sign up for that, chances are they're going to perform significantly better. But, coming from, that's just my history teacher, two cents.
I have to give options there.
I'll put this way, my first job out of college was teaching, was teaching world history. And I was told, you'll do this for three years to see if we can break you. And then after that, we'll talk. But that's when there was a hundred and fifty applicants for the job that I got, so. And it was, I'm not saying it was purgatory, but let's just say it was a challenge, so.
It's my least favorite thing to teach every three years.
What's that?
It's my least favorite thing to teach every three years.
Now, you're just trying to hurt my feelings. I'm saying, I didn't enjoy it, but the kid, a lot of the kids weren't fired.
Exactly.
And it's sophomore year, so that's not really that. All right.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain to approve the 2024-2025 new course proposal. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mrs. Lyon, second by Mr. Caver, to approve the 2024-2025 new course proposal. Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mr. Dowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yep.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, and again, unchanged from last month, the second reading of the policies. We'd sent those out and attached them. Didn't have any comments, and these are what I would consider relatively minor wording changes that have come through the Association of School Boards, the press plus policies.
Any questions on those? None, I'll entertain a motion to approve the press policy 113 as presented.
Over.
Your second?
Second.
A motion was made by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Caver, to approve press policies 113 as presented. Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Dowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item is the overseas approval request for Mr. Rasty's Ireland trip for agriculture for the summer of 25. This is the program on which he presented last month. We've attached several documents there to be able to look through. The last document that is titled Tour Proposal Rasty, that is probably the most informative document. That's actually from the company. John and I talked about some fundraising opportunities, and I think that's a beautiful part of what they do, what both he and Mr. Hamus do with our agriculture program, is there will be some opportunities for the kids to be able to raise some money. So, it won't be a, speaking from a parent's viewpoint, it won't be a sticker shock of, hey dad, can I get five grand to go to Ireland? Yeah, well, not so much. So, did anybody have any questions on those documents? Or for the program? I'm still checking into the, before you ask, I'm still checking into the need for chaperones. So, I, here, guitar class.
Can't take guitar, can you?
I inherited an Ireland and I wanted to go check it out, so.
You just want to represent, I do, is that what you're saying?
No, that's a problem. So, last time, the only time I was in Ireland was like forty-eight hours, so now I would love to see more. So, and that's not paved, so. Yeah, it's gonna be phenomenal.
If there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the overseas trip to Ireland for the summer of 2025 as presented.
Yep. Second. A motion was made by Mrs. Lyon, second by Mrs. DeBlock, to approve the overseas trip to Ireland for the summer of 2025. Mrs. Lyon?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mr. Dowden?
Yes.
Mr. Helm?
Yes.
Mr. Caver?
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And then, the next item, construction update for Sherard Elementary School. I actually attached the architect's punch list, as in the things that are needed to be done. I want to give a public shout-out to Mr. Lyon and his eye for detail. Literally, nothing has, nothing has gotten by him in terms of, we need to make sure that this, this piece shines, and there are no mistakes by the time the kids come in. When we did our walk-around, you probably saw that there was little strips of blue painter's tape everywhere. That was just kind of the signal for the cosmetic stuff. But if you scroll through that architect's punch list, a fair amount of that was because of what Mr. Lyon was able to provide, because he was walking through it a couple times a day, keeping an eye on things and making sure that everything's going to get done. But the amount of detail that was put into that, very proud of Mr. Lyon and our architects both for keeping an eye on things and working with Hodge to make sure that it's getting done how it needs to be. So, also, the final bill for that addition, Lindsey and I and Becky were talking this afternoon, figured it up, it's going to be approximately five point seven million dollars. That is going to use almost none of the contingency money that was sitting there. So, to put that in perspective, the roofing project, should it go according to plan this summer, would be, should be entirely covered by the contingency money that did not get used on Sherard Grade School. And in the process of all that, again, I think we've made significant inroads and a good relationship with the neighbors on at least two sides. We've got the fire department on the other side, they're always great. But the actual stormwater retention, the water that will flow to the west is now significantly reduced than when it was originally built. So, with that retention fund there, it's going to have a two-inch outlet. That's all the water that can go through there now. So, it might eventually go through there, but even in a big storm, the people to the west are going to be very thankful. And Dr. Swanson was very gracious on the north side. Instead of having to pay to remove the temporary road, worked together with him, literally just moved the rock over to his road, graded it out. So, didn't have to pay the truck and all the way to stay at the high school, which would have been a significant cost. So, things are looking up, and again, thank you publicly, Casey, for all that you've done to keep an eye on that project. Next item, keep it rolling on here, exploration of solar power options. I talked to three or four different vendors, if you will, at the triple I conference regarding solar power. Some of the options for rebates are going to be expiring. So, with the board's permission, I would just like to officially engage some of those people to put some numbers, some of those companies to put some numbers on paper to see what we're talking about, commitment-free. If you'll remember, last year, I had the not-for-profit that was working with the Administrator Association and the Association of School Board draw up some plans and look at some things. That was a little bit different in terms of what they were, how should I say, how they were extrapolating the numbers out. John and I talked about that at length, and it was, boy, I sure hope power bills don't go up that much. But that was just one funding structure, if you will. So, what I'd like to be able to do is, before the money runs out, so to speak, from the federal government, literally, to get some numbers in. I've already gathered everything, I should say Lindsey, Becky have helped me gather everything for the power bills, so that we do have a year's worth of power bills that I would just hit send. Here's what we're looking at for the junior, senior high complex. Here's what we're looking at for Matherville, Winola, and then we can estimate Sherard, because obviously, we have a newer facility. We do have room for a feasible plan at every building except Matherville, because Matherville's layout versus how much we would probably have to acquire some property, unless we wanted to take some fields away, some green space away. And for the amount of power that Matherville uses, it probably wouldn't make any sense. If we can gobble up enough, enough other areas, so if we can cut down what all of Sherard and High School's power bill by seventy percent instead of sixty percent, it makes trying to acquire property in Matherville a moot point. So, but at this point, like I said, I'd just like to gather, what are we talking about? What would something like this actually cost?
Are you looking at purchasing the solar system and equipment so it would be property of the district? Or are we going to lease them a chunk of land, they put their raw material on it, and then we take a deduction, a reduction in our power rates?
That would be, that part of the exploration. I know there's, there were companies at the Assembly Hall, if you will, the Exhibition Hall, that ran it both ways. I would say it would also depend on what interest rates are going to be before we, before the money, the incentive money runs out.
But the incentive can be used in either situation, whether we purchase or we.
I think so. I think what's probably more popular right now is the, the schools purchasing something, because the federal money comes through quicker for schools than it does for anything else. That was one of the things we talked about at the hazard mitigation. There's a couple farmers there, and one guy from a Levy district, and they're like, boy, we're not, we're still waiting on our paperwork for our rebates and everything else. And I was like, oh, not schools, they've treated us pretty well, so. But yeah, I'd like to, like to not only explore a couple different companies, but a couple different funding opportunities. And if it turns out to be something that isn't feasible, you know, so be it.
As you're going through, you said, looking through your past year's worth, if you could, you'd go back further than that, too. I, I've kept spreadsheets of a commercial property that I know in, over the past ten years with how much kilowatt hour, or how many cents per kilowatt hour and everything, so I can actually gauge to a point of what increases it's been over the ten years. But I think it'd be handy to know, too, for if you're going through all those bills and everything, be able to pull that, not only your total usage, but divide that out by the total amount of kilowatt hours, so you can actually see that cent amount per kilowatt hour per property, because different commercial properties and everything have different rate classes and stuff. So, as their usage goes up and down, you know, they get different types of rates, so. That'll help analyze that a lot. And, you know, the one property I was looking at, over the last ten years, for, for the years averaged, it averaged almost the exact same cents per kilowatt hour from 2013 to 2023. So, some of the stuff we preliminary looked at last year, where it showed twenty years going out and an increase in what we pay, it doesn't get backed up by what it's been over the past ten years. So, at, at least for that property.
And I have offhand, I know I have five-year, five-year history for the junior, senior high. I'm trying to explain, you know, and look at the windmill and see what the options for that were, so.
Yeah, certainly, I want another windmill. Or windmill light, specifically.
Yes. I've had, I've made the mistake of giving out my business card to some of those people, so. It won't take too long to contact them, just answer the emails. So, but I'll, I'll try to have something put together by, say, the February meeting that would just give some options. Next up, I'll wake up my computer here. Official branding of Sherard Community Unit School District. Mr. Fullerlove and I had a conversation. I'm fortunate that it's his specialty. Branding is probably too strong of a word to use. Where this initially had come from was, when I, before I actually was in office, Mr. Voucher said that we probably want to start talking about making some, do we like the mascot we have, do we like the colors we have? You know, he had, he had visited that a few years earlier. So, I engaged Ms. Elliott and Ms. Emendorfer at the high school to talk a little bit about it. So, from the school side, it was, we need some friendly logos for sportswear or, you know, for, for the spirit wear. We need things that'll fit on a hat, you know, we need something that everybody's using so that we don't have one tiger for volleyball, and then the basketball team sells spirit wear, and they think that this tiger looks a little bit better or different, so we're gonna use that. Or maybe we're gonna use a different color, purple, over here. So, I guess, not necessarily branding, but more standardization. And a lot of that already exists. So, ultimately, where we're at right now is, I would like to talk to a company about making a standard tiger, if you will, and giving us some options that then the board and the community can, can weigh in on.
I feel like we did this like four years ago, and nobody abided by what was put forward.
Which is, I agree, a hundred percent, that's why we're here.
And, yeah, well, then, Karen, they just went on to continue whenever they wanted, per their certain score.
I got a quick education in that process, too, because evidently, Platteville, when Ms. Emendorfer was there, went through this, and so she still has the guidelines that are given to coaches. And Booster Club, I'm not worried about whatsoever, they're great with communicating. But this would be the process that is given to the coaches. Here are, here is our official color of purple. This is the industry-accepted number, et cetera, the shade. This is how many colors are in the logo, and this is our logo. You have the Sherard S, the Sherard Crest, which I like, I've got on my jacket and letterhead. Then you have, Mr. Scholger, can I get you to model for one moment, please? Thank you. So, that is both the official Sherard and the official Sherard S.
Unlike Casey's shirt that has.
This was eighth-grade baseball thing.
Nice!
Thank you for bringing Mr. Lock's point.
But that, he wore that shirt when he's in.
No, 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 I'm talking about.
It's vintage.
Just, and that one is not really, there's differences.
Let's count T's.
The color, the back straight is solid.
Yeah, because I always joked around that looked like a football.
Football. Which I didn't like, I like his better. I'm just saying.
And, and great point, Mr. Fullerlove, copyright. By engaging the services of a professional company to give us some options, we avoid all those potential copyright issues, okay? Now, also, in that same vein of copyright, if we decide that, so, for example, the current, the current shades that are used, and please don't think that I'm an LSU fan, but that's what it's known as, LSU purple and gold, okay? So, if you can standardize that, everybody that you want to get spirit wear through understands what is LSU purple and gold. Yes, we've got our numbers and the color palette, et cetera, but everybody understands that. Now, if we can have a few options or a couple options that we can put forth to the community, the board, the coaches, to see what are the best options. They were laughing at me yesterday because I used the mugshot example. We need a tiger that faces profile, we need a tiger that faces straight-on, but they're matched. So, if you have a ball cap, you have a face-on tiger, okay? If you have a T-shirt, you have a profile tiger, okay? Just for ease of printing and that it will look good, and everybody can have the same thing. But again, if we can have a couple options and people can say, you know, I want to weigh in, I like this one. I think that's been very important for the community. So, one of the old-timers I have, as an instructor, wants that, nothing dies harder than a high school mascot. So, we don't want to get into that. We just want to make sure that we have a unified system, if you will. So, questions, comments, or concerns?
Standardizing the color concept, so if the uniform are different colors, what expenses does that have in athletics to fix a uniform?
It'd be phased in. We wouldn't just say, okay, I'll get everything new, or we.
No. But when they are getting new ones.
But then, we run into the.
There's no plan to change it.
It wasn't so much, it was all the extra.
Mostly, yeah, mostly spirit wear.
Yeah, there's a different ask, different tiger, there's a different.
Different thing for every sport, it seems like. And even within a year, we'll have multiple tigers.
Yep.
On, on the same sport.
You should just name them.
I will keep the board updated, and again, Kayla's done a phenomenal job. Kayla and Lisa, I'm literally just the sounding board. And we have two people that know what they're doing there, so I try to keep out of their way. All right. Let's see, next up, I am, this is something that I'm extremely excited for. We have the opportunity tonight to present a candidate for the replacement for Mr. Pasala, who's also here with us, to be the new Sherard Junior High principal. We convened a hiring committee that met here at the district office. We had two, we had two junior high teachers, we had some administrators, and we. And the pick of the, for the recommendation for the Board of Education is also here with us tonight. So if I could have Mr. Brady Strawnquist, currently in line with Roseville High School, stand up. Now staring you uncomfortable. That's the whole reason. Mr. Strawnquist did an exceptional job in his interview. We had an extremely strong pool of candidates. And again, I think that we are, we are positioned as a district very good. I can say that based on the candidate pool. I can say that based on the interest that we had. And I can assure the board that Mr. Strawnquist will do nothing but raise that bar that we already have. I was extremely grateful for the committee members that we had. We, we have outstanding administrators, we have outstanding employees. Their insight extremely valued, and I feel fortunate just to be able to work with those people. And again, the people that we had on the committee, we had fantastic conversations and tremendous insight. Mr. Warnetton, did you add anything?
Yeah, it was unbelievably difficult decision, great folks, couldn't go wrong.
Which puts the district in a phenomenal spot, so. Mr. Strawnquist is already a member of the resident of the Sherard community, which means anytime there's something wrong, he's just right on the road and he'll give me a call to help me out. Saturdays, Sundays, evenings. But also has extensive experience, 17 years in the district, so I'm quite sure many folks recognize his face. I actually met Mr. Strawnquist last year when he was at his kids' activities at Winola Grade School. So, that was my first opportunity. But, does the board have any questions? All right.
Okay.
Did you prepare your speech? I can't say it without straightening myself. But thank you again for being here with us tonight, very much appreciate it.
I just want to make one comment, that when Casey was hired, his wife brought cookies.
Hey, I made those cookies! I will make sure cookies are filled in the next week. With that, I'll entertain a motion to hiring of Brady Strawnquist as the Sherard Junior High Principal to begin at the start of the 2024-2025 school year.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second. A motion was made by Mr. Helm, second by Mr. Dominic, to approve the hiring of Mr. Strawnquist for the junior high principal to begin at the start of the 24-25 school year. Mr. Helm.
Yes.
Mr. Dominic.
Yes.
Mr. Kaber.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBlock.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Yes.
Mrs. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Fullerlove.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I guess it would be welcome back officially. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, was there anything in communication correspondence? Okay, there are nothing. Future agenda items.
Oh, yes, ribbon-cutting ceremony. I've shared communications with everybody regarding the timeframe. I've sent out the calendar markers. And let me make sure that I, hold, wake up my computer again, it keeps going to sleep tonight. Make sure that we have the official announcement here. The official ribbon-cutting for the new addition in gymnasium will be at 6:00 on January 9th, which is a Tuesday, in Creveux. So, 6:00, January 9th, Tuesday. And we will, talked about that a little bit tonight, walking through. We will see if it's an audible, given the warm weather that we've had thus far. Perhaps we can adjust, and it'll also depend on the crowd. But the good news is, we've got more than enough space in that facility to pretty much do it for one. So, and Mr. Warnetton promised to sweep up afterwards, so.
No food, drinking the gin.
Just got us out of refreshments.
We didn't fill our refreshment stands, so it was all good.
That's right. So, any questions with, all right, thank you for that.
Tuesday, January 9th at 6:00?
Yes, sir.
Future agenda items, anything else? Calendar.
We will be doing the calendar next month. I, we have a calendar committee meeting. Let me get back to my, my calendar here. We had a calendar committee meeting last week. And the calendars themselves are in the hands of the SEA members of the calendar committee. And they were going to make a couple of adjustments that their members evidently had wanted to see. So, we're a month out, but there were some, there were some questions with what was on the calendar, because we were so far out. So for example, one of the questions was, the New Windsor Fair and Rodeo was not on there officially. I'm reluctant to put the New Windsor Fair and Rodeo on there officially, simply because, number one, it's an early out. Number two, if it goes on the calendar, then you would have to amend the calendar. And I was seeking to avoid any conflict by doing that. I've had communications with some of the organizers for the event, and they are 99% sure that it is going to be on the same traditional weekend, if you will. However, until we see it permanently, I would prefer to do it like we did last year and not put it on there as an early out. So, and let's see, should be fine. Laurie Arnold had taken the lead, and she was doing a phenomenal job of making sure that the questions were answered, and we should have it before the board next month, two options.
Anything else? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, according to five ILC Section 120, subsection C subsection, C subsection 1 through 12, 1621.
Still listening.
Is there a second?
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.